Councillors from anybody, if that happens and people be bored and the meeting will be shut down. We're not having it in all markets, it's ridiculous. Ask your questions, 100%, but please do it respectfully on all sides. So item number one, apologies for absence. Item number two, declaration of interests. Item number three, finances, to discuss the council's financial position. So just before we start, because this is, Council Whitehead has requested this extraordinary meeting, so we'll let her in the moment. So. So we've got a budget report here and what's in the accounts. The clerk may correct me if I'm wrong here. So we're going with finances first? So we'll go for expenditures starting from April 24. So expenditure, and if people want a copy.
Yeah, yeah.
People want a copy of these, ask for it and we'll give you a copy. So the total of expenditure is £1,113,398.77. The budget was for £1,295,950, with last 85.9% of the budget spent, is that correct? So income, total receipts for income was £261,912.89. The budget was for £431,350. So we received that is on budget, or felt there's some budget to now? So 60%, 60.72% of the budget. So debitors on the 31st, debtors on the 31st of the 12th is £55,417. Total income up to now is £317,329.89, which is 73.5% of the annual budget. And obviously we're still in December, so there's a few. Balances as of 18th of December 2024. So the current account is £12,455. Wages account, £18,779. Savings account at £21,213.64. Deposit account, £30,000. And the CC LA property fund value is £195,597.49. The projected balance, at the end of the year, the projected balance for the end of the year, financial year. Financial year, 31st of 3/25, will be minus £52,134.26. As I say, people can take copies of these, if people lack a copy, it's all public knowledge. So moving on, Council Whitehead, with your motion, would you like to?
Good evening. I've called this meeting as I have concerns regarding our financial position. On the 5th of December, it was stated, a meeting had taken place regarding the finance. And as of that day, we were good to go, as long as we had no major incidents or mishaps or any unpredicted spending. We are on track to end of year, it will be tight though. It was asked how much we had got in our banks on that day. The reply, roughly £180,000. As a councillor, we have not received any budget reports, this is the first budget report we've got today. So we don't know if we are over budget or under budget. As a member of the finance group, which has met twice, no risks have been brought to light. So why am I concerned? When the budget was set, there was expectation that 30 grand would be transferred to reserves. If that's still the case, does anybody know? As no reports have been received in full council, my gut feeling is we won't be transferring into reserves. Instead, we will be using reserves, which I believe will now not take us to the end of the year. With the current state of our finances, we should not leak our reserves. What are we as a council going to do about it? In May, we expected savings of 10% in our non-staff costs, as this has been achieved. Using the figures on HT website for finances from April to September this year, we spent half a million, that's for just six months. So for a year, we can estimate a million. But that is without the wages of staff, which is estimated at another 600,000 on top of this. So we could be spending 1.6 million this year, which doesn't add up with these figures just being given today. Last year, Council Bates was chair. We know finances were not good, and due to overspend. But no investigation was held, so this final financial year, we are even worse off. So does anybody know what overspend is at us now, near my year end? Are we on budget? Have we gone over budget? Why has no reports been brought to full council? And why are we still on track to keep going till the end of year? As recent bank statements revealed, which were dated on the 16th of the 12th, 2024, which was Monday, we have just 35,000 grand and 13 reserves, and the CLC property account has 195 grand in. It's a big increase from Monday, what they've now stated we've got. If we carry on with this projection at the same rate, we would need to increase the preset massively next year, which I am against, and many more councillors as well. This council, we, and I state "we", are failed. So why should the public pay for our mistakes? I propose to do away with the finance committee and instead create a working group to look at reducing costs and to review cash flow for the next three months. And for the clerk to issue a budget report and a risk assessment to all councillors. Thank you.
Can I just come in regarding your proposal for the finance committee, that would have been brought to full council. It's not disputed. I mean, so. So it's projection, on the figures you've got in front of you. So projection, so I mean, where are you getting, if you say 600,000, you're paying for staff wages from now till April?
Right, so they're all there. Andrew, Andrew. I met the clerk on Monday for bank statements and for wages. I was given a list of wages from April to present day. And they're roughly, they're roughly between 46 and 55, I used to say 61,000. So if you estimate that for a year, it's over 600,000, just under.
You're going about for the full year, for the three remaining months.
Well, I would say if you're paying now £50,000 a month, you're gonna need another £150,000.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, because it sounded to me like you were saying we need 600,000 from now till end of year.
No, no. What is confusing is, I only received these bank statements on Monday, and there's been a hell of a lot of money transferred into these accounts. I don't know where this money's come from. So on 16th of December, all we had in were 55,000, this is on the bank statement she'll give me, Andrew.
All I can say, Chair, is that those are the balances I look today.
So where does this money come from? That is a hell of a lot of money that's just magically appeared. So the bank statement she'll give me on Monday were false. You can't, we cannot generate that.
So it goes to me, Council Johnson, please not swear him. I heard you swear then, so you think he's not swearing? So was there takings and things in the past week? Yes, you did, I heard you. Can we please be calm, I must have shut this meeting down, I don't want to shut it down. This is not a council meeting, extraordinary council meeting, I will not shut a full council. As I said at the beginning, I will not have people shouting out, abusing, being abusive. Swearing, saying the F-word is abusive. You didn't say it to anybody, but you said it. And other councillors must have heard you, because I am here, the hearing's not that good. Right, can we move, can I continue?
Can I just ask if they're only 55,000 in one account, nothing in another? And nothing in another, and now we're 300,000 up, where's this 300,000 come from, because that is not taking?
No, it's total income, it doesn't say taking, it says total income. 317,000. There is, on the CC, this is including CC LA, everything I've built up yet. Where will we? So.
So that is the income to date.
So 317,000 is income today, as we've talked this year.
That's what we've got in our bank account as of today, that's what you're saying?
No, no, sorry, that is the income to date.
What's in our bank account as of today?
If you look on the other side.
The current account, wage account, savings account, deposit account, and then at the bottom, projected balance, CC LA is at the bottom.
So we've got 52,000 in?
At the bottom, this is minus 52. That's projected balance.
So 12,000 pounds being put in since Monday. Wages, 18,000's been put in since Monday. Savings account, 20,000's been put in since Monday. So since Monday, we put in... Are we 50,000?
Because there's some confusion here, I'm not sure.
There's definitely a lot of confusion. There's your bank statement, what you give us. You want to see it? Would you like a copy? Would you like a copy?
Yeah, please. Sorry, I've scored on this one, but yes, we'll get you this.
I've sold the current app, please.
Sorry. This, this, thanks, no, absolutely not, but this is what I've got.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so indeed, the bank statement that you've handed out, councillor, is to the end of November.
If you look at it, it's dated 16th, as of the date.
First of 5th, 2024, 28th of 11th, 2024.
The date printed out.
That's the date printed out, that doesn't mean that's the day of the bank statement.
Can somebody read what it says on there, please?
It was printed on the 16th.
It was printed on the 16th of December. The statement date is from the 1st of the 5th, 2024, to the 28th of 11th, 2025. So there's another two, three weeks, additions to go in there?
Can I ask, now there's a business premium, which is that relating to one of the four accounts?
Can't hear you then, Sally, can you please?
Business premium account, which one does that refer to?
On the report you've got, that's a savings account.
Savings account.
Can I ask Chair as well, so can these other bank statements that have just been handed out?
These ones, they've been backed up.
Can these be returned?
So that's a business savings account. According to the balance that we've got dated the 30th of the 11th, there was 35 and a half, almost 35 and a half thousand pounds in it. It's now 21,200 as of the 18th yesterday. Where was that money transferred to? So 14,000 has come out since the 30th of the 11th.
The, our bank accounts are set to automatically transfer money to the current account from the saver. Well, whenever any expenditure comes out, that includes direct debit standing orders, anything. The balance is kept ordinarily at 10,000 pounds. So obviously yesterday was at 12,400, that will today have automatically generated a...
So basically, the current account and the savers account adds up to that 35,000, doesn't it?
Roughly, yeah.
So can I ask, as of the last meeting, the back payment was 10,000, which council signed up. Recently come back at 68,000, and wages on top of that, has this come out of this? Because they should have been paid off 15?
Sorry, so the, yeah, the balances you have in front of you are, well, yesterday's balances. So yes, any back payments will have come out before, so these are the balances after back payments.
So obviously, as you can all hear, and I think we all know the situation, yes, we could say we would try and save 10% on budgets. We do have a list, all councils have got of, come back. So we do have a list of unbudgeted expenditures throughout the year, just to run down a few. Repairs to stop the playside, staff, it says snap cabin, but I think it means staff, amenities. Repairs to play world slide, again, while I was, even though that is pretty expensive around that, it came nothing like the projected cost, which was 100,000, I believe, at one point. There's obviously the meat shop renovation that we're doing to do that, there is some staffing costs that we're not budgeted for in there. Replacement tools for baking.
Yes, so that was paid out of insurance, however, it will show as our...
Okay, so we're going like that. Stillstrom, Meltsum, Grandcare, leaf blower, wood preserver, gator, yeah. Pump replacement, this is quite expensive regarding the septic. One of the pumps itself cost £4,500. Also because of the drainage, because we had issues with that pump, we had to pay for sanitary toilets, I guess, one of the better ones, Kemper toilets. There was the, we got down there as Bouncy Castle repair, that's for the centre. Again, that's covered in costs that we take out from that. And then additional, because we then have another breaking, additional measures, and that sort of thing. As we're all aware, this year was going to be very, very difficult. We under no illusions of how difficult it's going to be. The projection at the moment is we will have to somehow either borrow, move from over funds, around 52, 53,000 pounds. That is just a projection. Is hope to council how we do that?
Is that, is that just?
Is that end of April, sorry, end of financial, end of financial year? So April 6th, before the next preset comes in. That's a projection. Obviously, you know, when we got this chair and we found the vision winning, but you don't want it to be as it was. Kind of self a difficult situation. However, I think you'll be able to see there the massive strides that have been made. We've lost, it's projected we're going to have to take out 52-ish thousand pounds, rather than the 200,000 that they took out the year previously. 100 and...
200?
No, last year, year before, when it was 100,956, yeah. From the 2019, like that year, and almost every year, this council since, for a number of years, has lost at least 150,000 pounds. We've managed, oh sorry, not lost, the expenditure's been over budget. So this year, we've got down to 52,000 pounds. Maxine?
Can I ask, I just, you still, I mean Karen King?
What, Sally?
You still on Karen King?
She does think last year, yeah, Karen, sorry, yeah, Karen, Karen, yeah, Karen King is our internal lawyer, yeah.
Can the public request that you actually do an investigation for this council?
You just, can you just, get here, Maxine?
Can we ask that the public ask that you actually do an investigation on this council's, on what's been going on, what money's being spent on, so we get a proper, proper outline from Karen King?
Well, the internal auditor does.
But we're not seeing it, we're not seeing it, Andrew, we're not seeing, we're not seeing what's happened, saying, what's been happening. Because he says, she says, Ben says, and it's all just, it's all just, we need a proper, a proper investigation. We need a doctor to tell us exactly what's gone on.
I'm going to say, yeah, the, yeah, the internal auditor's report's available for viewing.
I think Maxine's asking for a no, for an internal audit.
But then can we have a public meeting so we can ask directly who we want to speak to?
I don't think we're going to get an auditor on site, on any meeting. We can ask, we can ask, we will ask. It's not a problem. Again, if you need to go to motion.
I mean, I'm not being funny, but you brought Karen King, we brought, we brought Karen King in, and you've done, you've not done anything she put forward. Not blaming yous.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone's right, it's all of us. I don't think anyone's right, it's all of us. There is, I mean, I'm going to offer this out now, I have asked for a meet, I'm going to ask for a meeting early January for all councillors to, just a meeting, not a council meeting, just to see how we can go forward next year. No, nothing if you know, just to come up with some ideas. I've asked staff to come up with some ideas to, as I said, staff don't agree, they can say, we're looking at this, we can do this, we can do that, we can do the other.
There's many ways to save money, it's all working together.
This is what we're trying to do.
I think that's the issue, Carol, in it, nobody works together on here, to be fair.
I think, you know, about having meetings with councillors and staff, I think you need a group of us, you know, the public as well, to be in on that. Because a lot of public are qualified in a lot of different areas, whether maybe you're councillors or not, and might come up with some really good ideas to save money and to move forward.
So regarding saving money, saving costs, that is totally fine, however, when there's meetings, there is stuff talked about that is not for the open public and these councils to discuss. So I don't disagree, don't disagree with you. We could do that. We could do that. We could do that, you're not wrong, I totally agree with you, there is some things that...
I mean, I was bound by confidentiality, my job, as many of us are. And we don't go talking to outside and saying this name, that name, because that's how we've been trained. And there's a lot of people in the public who have got some potential at all, who wouldn't, and would work with you to move things forward better.
As you know, though, even though, even though I've got confidentiality at my company, that doesn't mean I should be information on other...
Well, there's confidentiality in this council, but it's the...
It's been breached anyway.
It's been breached that many times, unbelievable.
Can I just say, that I think it's an excellent idea that members of the public, but I do agree there are certain things that even I'm not privy to. So due to confidentiality, if you would work with us, if there's something like, I don't know, let's say staffing costs or something like that, or wage increases, I'm just trying to pull some off, yeah, and I apologise, I've got a head cold and it's killing me. But yeah, I agree, why not? Use your expertise.
Can the clerk just come in, please?
And that's to do confidentiality, and the bit that involves names is blocked out. So you don't have to name names.
Go with me, can the clerk just say something, please?
Can I just suggest at this point, Chair of the council, to that suggestion, bear that suggestion in mind, but just take it away and think about the practicalities of it.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, quite happy for a meeting with public and councillors, not a problem, just to sit around like a town hall, for want of a better word, to look at what we can do to cut costs. We can arrange that for just after Christmas. That's what we're trying to go for, line, we'll have to discuss that, because our staff are doing, they've been doing a lot, a lot of hours, they're doing a lot of work, and we need to protect the staff at the moment, there's some sicknesses coming up that we need to... Sorry, can't mention this, there's some absences coming up, so...
I think a meeting with staff, because staff have, staff's never been involved with councillors to extent where they can come and say, I've got an idea for this, and I've got an idea for that.
Well, I think what could improve that is the management team, our Andrew goes to the staff, as in the cap staff, asks them for their ideas, and then it can be presented to the councillors by...
Have we used to do that before? So why did it stop?
Or is the guy going to? But you know, Maxine, you can't discuss things like that, some of the things that we need to...
This is what, this is what is so frustrating, we're coming out with stuff what we all, what should be done, and we used to be done, and it got stopped, so this is council coming in.
We are looking at what we can and cannot release, we do look at every meeting that the Chair pulls, and I keep saying, can we not discuss half of that in public, can we discuss at least some of that in public? And at the end of the day, no, we can't, as we know there is leaks already. We do try and get out as much publicly what we can, and that is, that is the honest truth.
I understand that, what I'm saying to you is the fact that this council's changed so much from what it should, what should be.
I agree.
And this is why we need a proper, be able to properly speak to councillors or do stuff.
So again, so we're not just going on the same thing, so we will look into that, I have, I spoke to the clerk last week and said that we will arrange a meeting. The councillors, I will open that up to the public, but obviously we have to be wary of what we do discussing that meeting, so things that are cost savings is fine. Can't mention anything that we staff have, or cost savings, that sort of thing, this is totally, totally fine. Did you?
Can I ask that if the, I mean, I would love this to go ahead, that's my personal opinion, that all councillors get involved, instead of... We know our, we know our disjointedness from this council now anyway, we do know that. But can we ask that everybody comes together and everybody works together?
There's always the odd extenuating circumstance, we appreciate that, people's lives are getting impacted by you, but yes. I don't think we need as many councils as we can possibly get, along with members of the public to come as well.
Well, they've been voted on by the public, so we're working for permissioners. Yeah, only you.
Only you and Becca.
Being a nerd, yeah. Oh, God, yeah. Oh, you've got a lot of work, did you?
Is there any...
Going back to staffing and closures and everything with Lakeside, it said now from January. Are the staff that's in position now, are they being redeployed, are they being careful, going on reduced hours? Obviously, you're saying about the wages, and you can see what's happening.
Staffs are redeployed, and they are fully redeployed, without discussion of that, that's all I can say. Not reducing hours, we're not reducing hours, there's no redundancies.
I think Karen's best one to answer, isn't she?
Probably, I think what you said is...
There's no redundancies, there's no reduced hours. Jason, yeah?
I think it's probably one of the most productive meetings as a council you've had, because there's not really been any shouting or screaming, ugly little incident. You've actually discussed stuff, which is positive to see.
One hundred percent agree, yeah?
That, and being runway forward. I have a few comments, one, you mentioned the minus 52 at the end of the year. What was the figure for last year?
200 and, well, it wasn't a minus, when I say minus, this is over budget.
So your budget based on what income you were seeing?
240,000, 50,000?
It was, um...
We spent 1.4 million last year, didn't we?
Sorry, yeah, 260,000 from reserves.
So 260,000 is a bonus.
So income last year was, like, from that?
From memory, like, income was around 1.1 million, including pre-set, an expenditure around...
So that was everything, 1.1 in total?
Around 1.46, somewhere in that.
So we had 360k?
Sorry, 1.36, sorry.
So we had 260k overspent last year from, from income? So, we had a 260k overspend last year from, from income received?
Around that thing, I'm not, don't, wasn't the data, I'm not thinking of it, yeah.
Did that full money come out of some reserves bank, or was some of that, some of that carried forward to this year?
Yeah, it came from, it came from the council's existing balances, yeah.
Right, so, so then this year, you started on an even keel?
Yeah.
Expected income this year is what?
Excellent, this one, 217, or, yeah, sorry, so, yeah, three hundreds...
No, totally, totally.
Sorry, no, sorry, yeah, income, yeah, budget, so it's 431,000 plus, plus the precept, which was around the...
160,000?
Well, actually, sorry, no, yeah, sorry, I'm, it's the same, yeah, the same as the budgeted expenditure, so, yeah, one, one point two nine million.
So, you're expecting one point two nine in, and how much of that isn't precept that you're currently receiving?
Well, how much of that isn't precept, the budget would be 413,000.
And of that 413, what have we currently received?
We've currently received, well, 317, including...
Which is a balance of?
So, well, so, so far, we've received, we've received 73% of the planned income for the year, and we're 75...
Dave, what are you expecting, what?
They don't have things.
They can have a copy of that.
You can have a copy of this, by all means, yeah.
So, 400 of what's expected?
Four hundred and thirteen thousand is expected.
Four three one, yeah.
Yeah, minus 317, so that's about one...
Eighty three, thirty one, 124.
One fourteen.
So, you're expecting another 114k in revenue between now and the end of the year, and where's that revenue coming from?
Right, that's what was budgeted for, it does look like we're going to be slightly under on that.
So, minus 52, is that 52, if you receive that 114?
No, sorry, that's what we're expecting, it would, if, if we, if we'd received that 114, it would be zero, we'd be, we'd be, yeah, the balance would stay the same as they are, wouldn't have to move any money. The issue is, we're not expecting that.
You're expecting to receive another 62,000 between now and the end of the year?
Yeah, thereabouts, yeah.
Or where's that coming from? What's going down with that?
Well, yeah, there is, predominantly room hire, unpaid bills, sorry, this isn't including unpaid bills up to now, but, yeah, room hire and general sales, soft food, food sales things.
So, you're closing, so you're closing Water Park in January, so there will be no income from that, from January, will there?
There will be no income from the Lakeside, but the, we'll still be selling food from the Water Park, and we'll still be selling food from here as well.
Right, so, can I just amend, remind that in the winter months, or January, February, March, literally, you need a few hundred pounds a week in Lakeside, normally.
Yeah, yeah. Eleven thousand pounds for a month.
What, sorry, thousand, what did you say?
Eleven thousand for a month.
Oh, it's not, is that for a month or what?
For a month, in winter, but we're spending more than that.
Spending more than that, come in.
And you're going to benefit from Water Park closing, especially in the months, because you'll receive rent as a bonus to losing...
Well, that, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and have you any idea when that's due to kick in? I'm not asking contractual, that is just any ideas when it's due to reopen as a facility park fully?
It's due to re, well, the hope, all we can say, the hope is inter, in time for the peak season in 2025, can't give a date.
Again, this is not a date, but I am hearing rumours that around Easter, they'll be opening, but again, they've all got visions down the park, Bichon Cafe, Burger Man, whatever you call it, that sort of thing, so the public will still be able to do that, I think we need to pass a motion, do we pass it, please, or something?
Yeah.
So, I, I was going to do the Sunday dinners in back end of January, around 26, 27, I think it was, going to move up to here, for people to, that's going to be advertised, we need to just approve things before we can advertise that sort of stuff.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's things we are looking at, the staff are doing, they're pulling up routes to try and get more income in the year.
It seems a massive improvement, definitely. It's the last thing, I think the most frustrating bit for me, for members of the public, and probably other people that, that have come to go, is the amount of stuff that's done in exclusion. Now, I appreciate anything staff related, 100%, it should be exclusion, if it's commercially sensitive or illegal, again, that should be an exclusion, but I think there's far more going in exclusion than what should be, and I did raise it as, I think, two town council meetings ago, and asked, and I think it got home, you'd come back to me and clarify, and nobody asked, exactly what act you were doing the meetings under, the exclusion reasons, which you're supposed to document before you do the exclusion, you're still not doing that, and you've not come back and confirmed it, so I'm just wondering why there's so much done in exclusions, and, and a good suggestion of involving members of the public, and, and we all have our different specialities, some of you up there will have some really good specialities in some things, and then some members of the public will have better specialities in other things, so there's an option being put forward for members of the public to assist in certain things, I can see there's, it's a good idea and some councillors wanted to happen, there's definitely a resistance, which I think we can sense, I just can't understand why there's so much resistance to the public actually being involved in, in the process of why so much is, is kept from, and then when we ask questions, I mean, last meeting, perfect example, I asked three questions, I got shut out, I thought this was about public being able to, all councillors accountable, and talk, your standing orders, as you quote, take the wrong question, change them, because she's there to represent the public, and we should be able to, everybody accountable and ask questions.
The standing orders state, question time for the public is 15 minutes length, but the Chair has, the Chair can change that.
My, my, it's a, it's a, it goes, I should say that, it goes, I should always say that, in theory, and I would never do, I would never do this, in theory, our councillors are supposed to ask one question, speak for three minutes.
Counselor.
Counselor, a councillor on each emotion is supposed, we don't do that.
And a member of the public, you're...
And a member of the public to say, is not supposed to be...
So, that's been changed then?
No, no, it's been the same for years.
Don't just leave her.
But we're just, we're not changing it, we're not allowing public to speak, we allow councillors to speak more than the, as long as we're doing in the spirit of things, that's what we're saying, and we do ask, and there was a reason why, and I'll explain to you that later, not doing publicly, well, I'll explain to you later, so...
I, I just feel like, you know, I know in previous meetings, it's got a little bit easier, and that's a reason then for, for trying to close meetings down a bit, I get that, but in the spirit of things, with everything that's gone on, to improve the relation between both councillors and councillors and councillors and members of the public, I just don't see why things can't be more, that's all I'm saying.
I, I agree, I do agree.
To be said.
I also agree with you, sorry, yeah, Carol, I do agree with your initial statement, this is probably one of the better council meetings that we've ever had, and we need to get more like it, and we can disagree, it's fine for us to disagree, you know, Helen may say, I want to save money on X, and I say, I don't agree, well, that should be on Y.
Never agree.
That's, that's fine, I think we're probably going to be on more than what you think, that's fine, as long as it's done respectfully, and once a motion's been passed, that motion's been passed, and then you move on, and then move on to the next one, and then do one, he said, oh, and there's a lot, and I could probably, put me on, I've probably done it myself at some point, I'm not saying that.
It's my understanding when Chair meets, that it's discretion of the Chair, if a lot of people have got their hands up, then you've got to limit it, like three minutes, every councillor wants to have a question, you've got to limit, otherwise, it's the Chair's discretion, it's unlimited, ask as many questions as you like, as long as everybody else is getting a chance to ask.
And I believe that's the first time I've ever done that, and I'm never sure of meeting now yet, and that's the first time I've done that, and there is reasons that I will explain to you personally.
Going back to the exclusion part, what you asked about, Jason, it should come to council at the beginning of every meeting, to vote on what should be an exclusion and what should not be an exclusion, we're just getting a list saying, this is, this is agenda and this is what's an exclusion.
It is a predetermined act that you are doing prior to the event, that's the legal terminology of what you're doing, and that is incomplete, by all means, correct me, Andrew, but...
No, so I'm not, I was, I was correcting the Chair.
Correct me, not you.
Yeah, the, the item on the agenda...
It's not by, in this case, it's not by in general.
Yeah, but the exclusion...
In this case.
Exclusion of present public is an item on the agenda which shouldn't be voted on really, rather than...
And it should be voted on by item, because if not, it's a predetermined action that the men, that the council are unable to vote against. Check, check, check your hat.
I do recall at last council, that, when, when, now, when they come to the council and they said these people, these were in, these were in exclusion, then people said that, that the voters, that should be an exclusion, that should, that should be...
I'm saying, sorry, sorry, I'm... I'm getting, I'm getting double, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure if this is what's, this is what's meant, but, yeah, council, absolutely, council, the council absolutely can, or any committee can vote to move an item to or from exclusion.
That's the beginning of a meeting.
Well, at, at any point in the meeting, really, or, or, or change the, the order of business in any, in any way, in any way, that obviously has to be by, so, by resolution.
Just a second, Jason, I'll come back to you, so with regards to, we've used vote on to have an exclusion in previous meetings, I've never done that, although I've been on council, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying we've never done it, but we don't, we do actually look at what we can and can't put in, I don't, I don't think we need more out of the public, I really don't.
I, I, there's a lot being in exclusion which shouldn't be in, because it is, it is...
And I will say, probably some of that is on, on the side of caution, because sometimes councillors just say something that they shouldn't say, and I think as councillors are growing, we need to be careful and aware of what we are going to say, and making sure we're not doing anything that's confidential, so, Jason, that is Andrew, and then I'll come back to you.
As far as I'm concerned, the legislature, not worth a word, but how it essentially reads is that makes a right list of the intended exclusion items, not detailed, so it should, if it's a staffing matter, it should just say staffing matter, that should be actually on the agenda, and it should give that list for the members of the council to vote to act on their imminent exclusion.
Okay, we'll do all that, we'll do that again, really, again, regarding this one in item five.
It's distorted.
Sorry?
It's distorted.
Does it give the reason?
Yes, to discuss a motive for an external investigation.
That one does.
Some may not, but we need to be careful what we put, yeah, so, I'm just conscious of time, so, staff hours, so, this lady?
The only thing that I would advise is, you know, you have an exclusion in the middle, you might be best to have your exclusion before you need...
We've done that, and that caused all sorts of issues.
But, but then you can, as a council, can say, this can go into the public arena, this can't.
We've tried that, I think, it was tried, and it, it, it embarrassed reasons, it didn't work.
If you were a full council decision to move it all to...
Move it back to, that's correct.
I just thought you'd be a complaint, so, come in, well, no, I mean, I don't mean that, I mean...
We can't start meeting.
We can't start a meeting.
We can't talk about it until meetings start, start meeting, members of the public have to be in order.
So...
We have to come in, to back out.
So, Julie, and then we're going to move.
Just a quick one, I don't know how the answer is tonight, you've mentioned about the unforeseen expenditure, expenses, things breaking, is there any updates on what's happening with Sandy Gates' supplies, please? Particularly around our journey, grassroots football clubs, loads of training sessions?
There's no, no update at the moment, we are working on it.
Staff are working on getting resolutions for it.
Can you just confirm, because we've been...
Told that Sandy Gates shut?
That's on...
Are you, somebody, Vicky?
Go on, Karen.
Sandy Gates shut, can we ask, why is he shut?
Their staff, I lose, I shouldn't have said that, but, yeah, yeah, lack of staff, lack of staff.
You're for West End, what, uh, yeah, so during Covid, these teams, and I were one of the parents of them teams, use them facilities, we didn't need staff up there, they were given a key to use that, that, that thing to go in for the toilets and to clean it up after, why aren't we doing that now, instead of paying staff?
I could go to that Chair, I'll, 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 just bring in, so...
Can I just say, in answer to your question with exclusion at the beginning, when we had that, because exclusion sometimes went on absolutely ages, it wasn't, we felt it wasn't fair on you and the public, and that's why, it, it was voted to go at the end, so we're not wasting your time.
It was tried, I'm thinking, so...
If there's anything in the public discussion with public, it's like speaking, like...
When Stan was, sorry, when Stan was the Chair, that was a, before they put forward, they did try, tried it all year, and some of this year, and then we're getting all sorts of complaints and...
It was difficult actually to lead and come back in.
Especially...
Going back to Jason's, we never actually just go to the beginning, we just don't need to go to an exclusion, you know, is it?
And that's always been the case, I believe, yeah, that's always been the case since I've been on the council.
But I have learned since the age of the right.
So, if that's it, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to move on to the next item, item four, all councillors vote, exclusion of present public, so, can I have a pause please, a second, all four? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, again, if, if anybody wants, I'm going to need black copies of these, I don't know. Anybody wants a coffee?